Eyelids inside out.
I had a rule against that at my old school because it freaks me out so bad.
We need to do a where are they now? You know, like where are the kids now that stuffed their papers in their backpack with no folder? Where are they now? The kids that turned their eyelids inside out?
I think the kids who stuffed their backpacks full of no paper are the ones that are doing the Instacart orders that I order. Because I think that it's a very similar lack of being able to keep track of objects that I'm noticing.
Because we're among friends, I feel like I can say that I get a little nervous when there's a man doing my Instacart order. I also have a theory that when I order like produce, that the Instacart person is mad at me for ordering Instacart. And that my penance is getting really bad produce.
I never order Instacart anymore. Now that I eat vegetables because of the produce. Like when I just ate pizza rolls, it was fine because you can't really fuck that up. But now that I eat a lot of vegetables, I was getting mad that they were getting like avocados at the wrong stage, you know, like normal things that happen when you shop for somebody else.
I really need it. I will just not feed myself. I'll start ordering out and like I just won't get groceries and my family will be like, what's happening, mother?
Figure it out. That's what's happening.
Yet nineteen months old, figure it out. Make your own damn quesadilla.
I meant the big one.
No, he can do it. He just, again, back to the man thing. He's good at it, but I'm better.
Yeah.
Fortunately, I don't have a husband that weaponizes incompetence, so I can't make those little jokes. I'm just better than most people at things like that.
We do at the grocery store, we do a group trip because we go to a really crowded grocery store and we do like a divide and conquer. So I make the list and he goes and stands in all the lines for the butchers to get meat. And then I go scavenging into the aisles for the little specific things.
Oh, I love that.
It works so well. We, as he says, we're in and out of there like Superman. Like no one else in that grocery store is working as efficiently as us. I'm convinced.
Well-oiled machine. Yeah. My husband has to do the snacks because I don't really understand snacks. I'm like, okay, I need to plan what I want to eat because he cannot plan what I want to eat. Because if I don't even know what I want to eat a day in advance, he doesn't know.
Yeah, I plan.
I love to plan and then he has to do like the little treats that he gets things that I forget that I even liked.
I'm a great little treat shopper. For me, my boyfriend said the saddest thing the other day because I want an unhealthy little treat. Like I want flaming hot munchies and a Capri Sun as my little treat. My boyfriend is so wholesome. He wants like a tangerine and he said, when you go get snacks, can you think about me? And I was like, oh my God, I literally want to waterboard myself right now.
See, we all have our flaws.
Because to me, a little treat, that's a brownie, you know? So I'm not, I'm not in little treat mode in the fruit aisle. Now I am.
Yeah, that's my favorite kind of little treat. Sometimes maybe I'll want an entire Lunchable. I don't know. I'm going to keep everyone on their toes.
You know what the best little treat is when your stomach is fucked up? Take an apple and chop it up like teeny tiny, like chop it up like, like the way you would dice an onion. And then mix it with a yogurt of your choosing.
Oh my God, that sounds so good. We do a lot of apples around here.
It's the best because like it's not going to mess your stomach up. Like, like get some probiotic yogurt, like a good yogurt, not like a Gogurt, you know what I mean? Like get the yogurt with Jamie Lee Curtis on it.
Who is that?
In the Activia commercials. She's a very famous actress and I was watching Real Housewives of Beverly Hills and they put, it said Jamie Lee Curtis. And then underneath it, it said Kyle's friend.
I've seen her in the flesh.
Why? Where?
I was an usher when I went to Pepperdine and she came to one of the shows.
Oh, that would be a realistic place to see a Jamie Lee Curtis in the wild.
In the Malibu. But anyways.
What was the story that you wanted to be on for the people?
I wanted to tell you a story, but I knew we needed to save it. Okay. So hi, everyone. Today we're talking about school boards and crazy things that have happened in the school boards. So I want to tell you about my hometown. I have a couple of people who know where I'm from. I'm from Latrobe, Pennsylvania.
Can you spell that? I want to Google it.
L A T R O B E. The hometown of Arnold Palmer, Mr. Rogers, and the first Banana Split, formerly Rolling Rock Beer. But the bottles still say like Latrobe, but it's talking about a river. That is a disgusting creek that they are referring to, and there is no way they use that water in the beer. A weird lie.
Y'all's Google Images search is really being commandeered by Latrobe University. Whoever does their SEO and their marketing department is very fucking good at their job.
So in my hometown, there is something called the Trump House. I left in 2013. I didn't have this when I was there. Thank God. It's a giant, essentially cardboard cutout of Donald Trump in front of a house that was not built this way, but was painted red, white and blue like the flag. And it's a tourist attraction.
Is it like a tourist attraction where people just go there or are they charging?
No, they just go there. They pull off on the side of the road and they walk across the street to go to the Trump House.
Just like have their little Insta moment.
So in case anybody was wondering why the hell I left in 2013, that should give you a clue. So anyways, I want to tell you about my school board because they just recently held a school board election. And the winner of school board president is 22 years old. Because the people voting for him thought that they were voting for his father by the same name, but he won the whole thing.
Is Nathan Fielder his campaign manager?
Isn't that something else?
I thought you were going to say like, he like got everyone in his like community college Facebook group to agree to vote for him or something like weird like that.
So that's where I come from. But the reason I wanted to talk about this is because I just was looped into a campaign about running for school board. And I learned so many things. So like nearly forty percent of school board seats are uncontested. That's how the Moms for Liberties of the world who have a ton of fucking backing and money and all this shit. They're able to like swoop in and commandeer school boards. I feel like school boards are ripe for like a Bravo TV show. We should talk about this.
We should, because if you have like one ounce of political organization, you can overtake a school board.
Oh my God, and the time commitment, 10 hours a week, just like 10 hours.
It's like a high commitment hobby or very low commitment job.
Right.
So I was contemplating on my way to work today because I knew we were talking about this and I was thinking about, I don't know if my district has this rule. So if you're my superintendent, sorry dude, but my old district had a rule that teachers, like current teachers were legally not allowed to be on the school board because they vote on the pay. So it's a conflict of interest. However, that same district, almost every single school board member either has a family member or spouse who is a part of a company that is a vendor of the school district. So like, I feel like maybe let's get a teacher or two on there and like, they're not going to do nothing crazy. Like you don't, they're not going to January 6th, the school board take over and give everyone a $200,000 raise.
Some of them aren't. Maybe I would. Just kidding. People are like, why don't you run? Why don't you run? And I, if I said it once, I've said it a million times. I was bullied off of fucking Twitter, you guys.
I think you could hang. Actually not, not where you live.
You know those campaign commercials where they like smear the person that they're opposing? Can you imagine the meltdown I would have if somebody put a commercial on TV?
I wonder what they would put in yours.
They could call me names and tell me I'm a crybaby and say I'm a horrible mom and my daughter's going to grow up to hate me. And I would literally lose my shit.
I wonder what they would put in mine.
They would just play like a reel of the shit that we've said. Let's be real.
Like they could just find our own clips. Like it would literally just be a loop.
Shit from our own mouth.
A loop of me being like, I don't think men should have rights for like 90 seconds. Well, then we could sue them for copyright infringement or like unauthorized use.
Okay, that's my intellectual property.
Like I said that for me, not for you.
Yeah. Don't take that out of context. I was talking to my friends.
They're like, there was no context. You posted this as a standalone clip.
Yeah. No, I mean, I just couldn't do it, but like, I really want to be the type of person that could do it.
I feel like I couldn't do it because I like can't take stuff seriously. Like I would be like on like the news where they like interview the people and I would just be like having like a silly goofy time and like trolling them.
You did such a good job when we were on NBC though.
That was for like 10 minutes. Like I think if I was on the campaign trail for months, you know, like I think that would be the problem is because I have like a 15 minute timer of taking stuff seriously.
Absolutely.
That's why I didn't survive corporate America because I would literally just like, people would be like, oh, what is our market share? And I'd be like a million percent and everyone would just stare at me and I was like, it's funny.
I'm not doing well. So anyways, okay. So back to whatever we were talking about. Another fun factoid that I was told, this is all from Run for Something Civics, by the way, shout out to them. So 11 people are responsible for sixty percent of the book bans that were specific to like the LGBTQ community.
Eleven people is a comical number. That is a comically low number. Eleven?
You guys, we need to be paying the fuck attention. I'm just saying.
Like I said, not 10 minutes ago, I said, if you have one ounce of political organization, you can overtake a school board. Eleven motherfucking people.
Eleven. Well, because of the executive order 1069 in particular, you can just challenge a book and it gets pulled.
Yeah.
Like you can just be anybody.
Be like, I don't like it. Charlotte's Web. I think it fucking sucks. Pull it.
Yeah. We just need to pay attention to what's going on a little bit. We don't even have to run. You just have to like, be like, hey man, what the fuck is happening?
Like you don't even have to run, but when you're voting, be like, let's Google these people. Easy breezy. That's, I probably should put in more research than this, but every time there's an election, I just print a sample ballot and then Google everyone for like 15, 20 minutes.
Mm-hmm. Anyways, I've been compiling some videos that we can talk about. Okay, let's see.
I think he touched on my anger. The microphone's anger too, but that's what you're hearing from me is the frustration and the anger in this process. As everyone has said, we're leaving more confused than when we got here and to feel silenced is very angering.
Okay. So I'm going to hit a quick pause. So you're saying to feel silenced, you quite literally have a microphone in your hand in front of a crowd of people, ma'am?
And a captive audience. That man can't leave.
The antithesis of silenced.
Some people want to be persecuted so fucking badly.
There should be qualitative data and we should be able to say, figure out how we got to the number 12. I mean, my kids can add to 12. And with that, you are making some serious recommendations moving forward. You didn't really do things that were best for the community because if you did, you would notice that your reboundried and your different quadrants landed four schools in the central city to be close, which is absolutely insane.
Literally, what is she talking about?
I'm looking it up right now. This is about in the Salt Lake City School District.
Of course, it's Salt Lake City. Where's Jen?
The student population is declining and due to this, there are elementary schools with populations that are too small. So they're closing schools. Salt Lake City was calling it right sizing our elementary schools.
I love a branding.
I know. I love a snappy name. I'm wondering how they're redrawing the boundary lines because I'm like, is this person a super fan of redlining or not?
It's also Salt Lake City. So I think it's pretty Mormon and white when you look at the demographics of Real Housewives of Salt Lake City.
Right.
Do we want to move on to a new friend? This lady's kind of boring.
Move on to a new friend. The thing for me is that like, I don't know how I would sit there and patiently listen without making any face. You have to control your face if you're going to run for school board.
Yeah, no, that's why I can't do it. His little feet swinging was making me chuckle a little bit.
I know. He didn't care at all. Ooh, dress code one.
I love a dress code moment.
Ugh.
An East Valley parent is getting a lot of attention tonight after taking off his clothes during a school board meeting to reveal some pretty short shorts and a crop top. And this is all over a new dress code in the Higley School District.
Under the proposed policy, this would be appropriate in a classroom.
It's the show and tell seen at the Higley Unified School District meeting in Gilbert last month. Ira Latham stripping down to a crop top and short shorts before telling the district board that its proposed dress policy is lax. The former policy, which hadn't been updated for two decades, wouldn't allow for a student to expose their chest, abdomen, or midriff. The upgraded version only restricts students from exposing their undergarments.
Oh, it's like your school.
It's literally exactly what my school is.
He would hate it.
He would absolutely hate it.
Halloween would have killed him, would have put him into a coma.
Absolutely. The other day in my class, a bunch of the kids were talking, because it's winter now. So they're like not really wearing scandalous things because it's cold. And they were like talking shit about each other's summer outfits and they were being so mean. They were like, I remember when you came in here with that tank top and no bra. None of us wanted to see that.
Oh my God, kids are so uncensored and unkind.
I was like, maybe don't talk about it. Don't talk about this. You're making me uncomfortable. Yeah, right. Goodbye. Just for the people listening to audio only, he was wearing like a normal person outfit, like cargo shorts and a polo shirt. Exactly what you would expect from like roughly 40 year old white man. He pulls down his cargo shorts to reveal Daisy Dukes and then rips off his polo shirt to reveal. He's calling it a crop top. In my opinion, I would call that a bralette.
Yeah, I would say.
A sports bra maybe, a bandeau.
It was a crop top from his daughter, but it did not present that way on him and no shame.
Say, sir, I don't think that's your size. Like if you want to wear a crop top, you rock it, sir. But get your, get the correct size, maybe. I want you to be comfy.
We just want you to feel your best.
Feel your best, look your best.
I'll read you one. This is just a quick little quip. Hang on. This says, someone at my local BOE, Board of Education refused to give his name and referred to himself as Captain America. Another lady said that her granddaughter should be learning about the Easter Bunny in school and not sex education.
Ma'am, the Easter Bunny's not real. Okay, this one, it says backstory is that this is the district I teach for. This is a quote. This is not my district. I'm dumb, but I ain't stupid. A high school teacher was recently forced to take down her pride flag in her classroom. This is in Indiana. So there was a protest at a recent school board meeting to support LGBTQ plus student body. The lady at an hour and 15 minutes is completely unhinged.
Good evening, high school board members. I hope my outfit isn't a distraction for my message. Ask yourselves this, would you be okay if the school started baptizing children? We are here today because Valparaiso's school teacher hung a flag other than the American or Indiana state flag in her classroom. According to an article, teacher was asked to remove the unauthorized flag from her classroom. I'm not sure the timeline, but within days, there was a post on Facebook stating she was forced to take this flag down because people want to silence her and others that are affiliated with the LGBTQ community.
Not to body shape her, but like, why is half your titty out right now?
What's happening?
When are we going to get to the outfit? Because she started by saying, I hope my outfit isn't a distraction to you. So I thought it was going to be like a bit.
Right.
Maybe she's getting there.
This law was amended. Time, time, time. Okay. Well, you know what? I read off a couple of the Indiana state laws.
For a second, I thought they were yelling Dawn and I was like, is Dawn like the security that this is going to like take her out? I didn't realize he was saying time.
Oh my God.
I want to see if they remove her. Hold on.
We should be allowed to win.
I think that was a straight pride flag. It looked like it was like the two gender symbols, like the circles and lines and pink and blue.
Oh yeah, it was.
Is the security guard here?
I don't get the outfit.
I think that it was supposed to be a bit and this didn't go how she planned.
Was she like trying to dress up like the Libs of TikTok depicts us?
I think maybe, because I think what she, because then she was like, then we should be able to hang this like, so that she was gonna, it was going to be like a straight pride situation.
It seemed to be.
So I think she was trying to like give like a pride outfit, but.
It was not giving.
It did not give. I think we should contact her and I want to see what she had planned. Like if they had not.
Let's give her a platform.
No, in silence. Like if, like she can just come to my house, like out of my backyard or something. I don't want her inside. But like if they had not have cut her off, what was the vision?
See, that's half of the thing is like, what is your vision? What are you talking about?
If you're going to go wreak havoc at a school board, you better know exactly what your time is and you better be within it. Because I could tell she had like a punchline that she didn't get to deliver.
We could workshop things.
And I'm curious. I'm glad she didn't, but I am curious.
I wish she would have like read that to a few friends and family gathered in her home.
Done a run through with a timer maybe, you know? Because like, you know, when people prepare for presidential debates, that's what I'm going to compare this to. They have like an assistant of some kind who has the timer and will cut them off and be like, time. So that like they can get their answers with the right punchiness before they actually go.
See, nobody wants to be a homophobe's assistant.
That is so true. That must be a difficult job to recruit to. Not to lean into stereotypes, but from what I've seen, generally the gays do kind of run the assistant field. So I think if, if you get blacklisted by the gays, it's hard to find an assistant because I think even the straight assistants see the value in the gay assistant community. So they're not going to work with you either.
Not to move on too quickly, but I wanted to talk to you about Clark County.
What's going on in Clark County?
A lot of the times when I hear about school boards, I'm hearing about Clark County. Y'all are always having drama. Do you have a Facebook group I can join?
Just look, a lot of them let you in like without any questions.
And like that, CCSD kicked off its bi-weekly trustee meeting with teachers heckling school leaders.
I want to hang out with them.
I know.
Actually leading to another man who was yelling shame in Spanish, being placed in handcuffs and escorted out. These teachers were calling for the firing of CCSD Superintendent Dr. Susjara.
Okay, not the point, but him taking a sip of a Starbucks Frappuccino at that second was the absolute funniest beverage he could have possibly had.
Board President Evelyn Garcia Morales tried to temper things down.
We cannot conduct business. CCSD, CCEA is clearly interrupting business of our organization. It is very clear that CCEA has intentions to ensure that we do not conduct this meeting.
That's their union.
Organizers say more than 4,000 teachers showed up to rally in front of the Greer Education Center. Nevada lawmakers made a historic investment into public education this past legislative session.
Okay, hang on. Let me read you something.
What's it saying?
The Clark County School District sent 17 recruiters to the beach in Miami Beach, Florida to recruit teachers. They're from Nevada.
As someone who has spent so much goddamn time on Miami Beach, I worked on an office that was a less than a five minute walk from Miami Beach. That I cannot think of a worse place to recruit teachers to Nevada. That's where Las Vegas is.
Yeah. Two prospective hires came to the event. Neither one filled out an application and no one was hired. But 17 Clark County School District recruiters and principals stayed at a beachfront hotel in the Florida resort city over the Fourth of July. If I worked in this district, my ass would be screaming and getting arrested in the meetings too.
Because like to go recruit in another city implies that you offer moving packages, which public school districts never do. I know exactly how much they pay because I looked at this district and I ended up not moving there. Cause I love Las Vegas, but I did not move there because the teacher pay was so bad. And I moved to Miami when I first became a teacher because back then, before inflation was as bad, it was a little more doable there. But I digress. Why would you go to a district that pays better than you to recruit in their district?
And they stayed in Miami Beach for five nights, but the recruitment event was only for two and a half days. So they spent $37,000 on it.
I would love to see an itemized bill from their hotel.
Clark County Schools employees, fuck them up. Get them.
Teacher getting arrested.
Smiling.
They handled that like champs, I must say. Shame.
Shame.
If I ever get arrested for protesting at a school board meeting, I'll make this commitment right now. They're going to have to drag me out. I'll get rug burn. I don't give a shit.
Period.
Theatrics of it.
I would go up there and knock that Frappuccino.
Boom. I would grab it, take a swing of it and spit it into his mouth.
Ew, he'd like it.
Ew. Well, here, let me, let me open the other ones that you sent me.
Oh yes. So this is about anti-racism.
Yes. So the text on the screen, it says, school board member describes why she wrote a resolution to ban anti-racism in schools.
The reason why I authored this is just to make sure that both sides are always being taught to the students.
Oh my God.
And it specifically says anti-racism is not allowed.
So to go back to the anti-racism, when we're talking about anti-racism, I know when you look up the definition of it, it says, you know, when you oppose racism. Well, I'm. Folks, I, we really want to have an open discussion, but there is no way to have an open discussion with all the chitter chatter and the laughing. We're trying to talk. I heard what everybody said earlier about the lack of communication. I totally agree with everybody. We can do a much better job communicating. I mean, it isn't funny. We are, we're brand new. It's like dripping from our fire hose. We are trying our best.
Okay. She really said it's my first day.
On earth. I know that it says that this is the definition of anti-racism, but I have actually inserted my own and I reject it. Me personally, I'm going to pick a different one.
She said, I know what Webster's dictionary has to say, but have you considered that it makes me uncomfortable? And that's the real definition of anti-racism is when I'm uncomfortable and we should ban that because it's better when I'm comfy for me. Didn't know if you'd thought of that.
The biggest irony is her being like, both sides should be taught when that is literally the opposite of what they want.
And I don't know if you, you heard the person kind of whispering off camera, like they were the ones with the mic that I think asked the original question. When they said, so you want racism?
I just like the cognitive dissonance. I, maybe I just need to watch enough videos like this and then I would be inspired to run because I would love to take that bitch's seat.
I would love to just like walk into the meeting and like this judgment is purely from her aura. I knew nothing about this woman. But she seems like if I walked up to her and I was like, get up, like I think if I came in with enough confidence, she like wouldn't know what to do and would just give me her seat, like no election. Like I think if I was just like, you don't work here, I work here. You need to leave. This looks really embarrassing for you. We're going to have to call security. Do you really want that? Like I think if I just like leaned in hard enough and like refused to admit that I was wrong, I think she would get up and leave.
I agree.
This is another CCSD.
Um, I would like to address why a state that's failing in school to try and take on sex ed, you can't get math right. Why are you trying to take on sex ed? I would ask everyone to go to transparentnevada.com to go see how much Mr. Jara makes. Cause it is disgusting. Um, when you see where your dollars are going and, um, uh, also one of the reasons we're having so much water missing from Nevada is we're giving seven times the allotted amount to California, which also California is where we happen to take our kids for Disneyland, but this, our school trips.
Can we please focus on three point zero three?
We're not talking about water rights. Is, we're finding out it's super creepy and weird. California allows you to have sex with kids as long as there's a tenure or like age difference. That that's where we're taking our kids with our sexually confused teachers who don't have children of their own. I've been with my husband for 20 something years. I'd never have to discuss my sex life in public because my three beautiful kids teach your girls not to let every guy come in them so they don't have to have abortions.
Ms. Kingsley, this is.
Control of your children.
Can you?
Ejaculate. Don't let everyone ejaculate you. Control your own body. You don't have abortions. Planned Parenthood was founded to kill minorities.
We're going to.
Why are you cutting off my time? Um, because you're too common core.
Out of the order. We are in a board meeting. This is out of order. Ms. Kingsley, please leave the deus.
No, no, you don't get it. You don't get to control. Hey, you could, hey, you have a box of pubic hair. You have a box. You have a book of pubic hair you collected, Lola Brooks. I know about your book. I know about your book of pubic hair.
What the fuck just happened?
California takes our water and they're gay? Yeah, we're at Disney? Question mark.
I'm so confused.
California's gay water, your sexually confused childless teachers.
The box of pubic hair?
Is it a book or a box? She never really got the chance to clarify because she was silenced.
Why is there not a television show where we just follow these fucking people around? Cause guess what county that was? That was Clark County again.
What is going on with?
It's the aliens.
Las Vegas schools I have heard are like the worst schools to teach in. I've heard Las Vegas is like, it's bad.
Oh my God. Okay. Last one. This is a compilation. So I feel like it's a better.
To advance a sick, twisted demonic agenda, manipulating a child into believing they are opposite biologically, it's witchcraft.
Sexual content accessible to elementary children and promoting pride month and other ideologies has nothing to do with curriculum. And has everything to do with a culture war, which is the playbook for the communist regimes around the globe.
Always with the communism.
I mentioned the Trojan horse our minister and staff are pulling into our children's education as seen by the porn literacy books in our libraries.
Porn literacy?
Drag queens reading to our children, boys and girls' sports and locker rooms. And eventually, eventually, a model attracted staff person befriending our students.
Huh?
You have no desire to see what I've compared?
No.
Adults who want relationships or sex with children. The sexualization or grooming of children through books, drag, rogue sex ed, flags, symbols is unacceptable and will not be tolerated.
If we want to build a stable society, we've got to go back to what the Bible says is right and wrong. Not this loosey goosey stuff. The porn books are destroying all stability of family and anybody that can deny that, show us proof.
LGBTQ XYZ plus AD2 or the latest number is celebrating for three months in June, October, November. An extra 28 special days in this year.
There's a fall pride?
I'm scared.
That guy's accent was exactly what I thought it was going to be. With the word Bible came out of his mouth. It was like Bible.
There it is.
Yeah. You sound like a president from the 1800s. Okay. So if you're going to run for school board, I guess you just need to like prepare yourself to listen to shit like that all the time.
I kind of feel like now I should go to school board meetings. Like they'll just give anybody the mic. I've been missing out.
I think it would be really fun to go and just like listen. Oh my God. See, I'm bored. Just thinking about it. But anyways, you need to be strong of spirit.
In many ways to be an attendee or a board member.
I do think it's a real shame that like teachers can't run in most places or be on the board because it's like, well, these are the people like making the decisions for teachers.
And like, I understand the pay thing, but just like do it the way they do it with like lawyers and judges and stuff. Where if you have a conflict of interest, you recuse yourself from that vote. So like the teacher would just recuse themselves on that specific vote. Like it seems like a really solvable problem. So, but they know what they're doing with being like, y'all can't do this because then the teacher's like going to get up there and be like, hey, the math curriculum you spent 11 million dollars on doesn't work, just by the way.
Yeah. Teachers have to be outside, the blue shirt people that were standing outside getting arrested and screaming and stuff, but then also. But then also like people need to bring that energy into the half circle thing where all the judges sit or whatever. Whoever those people are.
They look like wizards.
Yeah, they do. They should wear robes and powdered hats.
With their little like mics and they're like up high.
And their Frappuccinos.
It's really sending me that the Frappuccino he sipped on wasn't even from Starbucks. It was like the kind you get at like a vending machine or a gas station.
Ew, those are gross. The grossest.
That's like a, that's like a down bad coffee. That's like where you're like, you have literally nowhere else to turn, but you need caffeine. So you're drinking the glass bottle Starbucks Frappuccino.
Oh my gosh, well, that was a trip. I feel that we're all dumber for having listened to that, but.
No, me too. I think I like lost ten IQ points.
It's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes.
I didn't want them.
Some episodes, you're gonna get smarter and some episodes, you're gonna get dumber.
I didn't want those ten IQ points. I've, I've realized too many things. I'm done realizing.
Humble yourself.
No thoughts, head empty. That'll be my campaign slogan.
And what a beautiful peaceful time it will be, once we finally get rid of those last pesky IQ points.
This was great. I'm gonna go eat soup.
Bye all, toodleoo.
See you next time on Teacher Quit Talk Land. Just as a disclaimer, because I am someone who is actively teaching, everything on this podcast is my personal opinion and does not reflect my district, my state, my employer, my students, or my admin. Everything on this podcast was recorded on personal time, on personal equipment. It is a completely separate endeavor from my school district.